All right, we're seven o'clock, so we're gonna roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Amundson.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
And Councilmember Jablonski. We have a quorum there.
Okay, if we could please stand for the pledge, and Russell's gonna lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, law.
Okay, our first section is quasi the Archbishop McCarthy items. Four and five have been pulled, they've got to re-advertise, so that'll be coming up on June 25th. So the item we have is number three with waiver of plat, so Russell, if you'll...
I'll swear in the witnesses, if anyone wishes to speak on tonight's item related to this waiver of plat, ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me, do you swear to tell the... Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Keith, do you wish to read the rules of evidence?
Yeah, I will, I'm gonna stop my video for a second because it keeps freezing, so I'd rather just you hear me, more importantly, for a minute. This is a quasi additional item, under the rules of procedure by the town code and charter, it requires five affirmative votes of the council to be adopted. Most of the times, you all are sitting as a legislative body making laws for the town. In this case, you're sitting as a jury, listening to the facts presented before you, making sure the facts meet the code, and if it does, by a weight of competent substantial evidence, it can be adopted. So there's one item on the agenda tonight, as Russell said. The other items had to be re-advertised, so they will not be here tonight. They'll be heard on June 25th, meeting at 7:00 PM. So at this point in time, I see Jeff Cadence is here from the town staff, and also see that the Appletons Council, Mr. Kleiman is here as well, so at this point in time, I'm gonna have Jeff enter the staff report into the record. Jeff? And Jeff, you're on mute still.
There we go, no wonder you couldn't hear me before. Staff report is still entered. By the way, on the last item, is June 25th the definite, or if we can make June 11th, is that still viable?
I think it's too tight of a turnaround, so we're gonna go with June 25th.
Very well. Okay, you ready for me to summarize the report? Please, yeah. Okay. It's a waiver of plat petition to subdivide 4.116 acres at the eastern terminus of Southwest 52nd Court, also known as Carrollton Lane, into two parcels. God, I'm sorry. It's just another reminder of the new reality here.
Is that a chihuahua?
My... Got some chihuahua in them. Each parcel would comprise 2.028 net acres in area, between 160 and 170 feet in width, which complies with the two acre, two net acre lot area minimum and 125 lot width minimum requirement. The property does not front a public street, does not front 52nd Court. Rather, it has an ingress egress easement connecting it through an intervening parcel to Southwest 52nd Court. This 25-foot ingress egress easement is existing already, and would be extended through the subject property to provide access to the northernmost of the two lots that they're creating. The petitioner will extend this easement to provide access to lot two. This additional easement area is not included in the net area calculation proposed for lot one. The petitioner has provided and executed easement and shared roadway agreement that has been approved as deformed by the town attorney. Letters of no objection are on file from all applicable utilities, including the South Broward Drains District. Staff recommends approval of the application, subject to two standard conditions. The first is that the approval does not become effective until the resolution approving this application has been recorded in the public records. Number two, that prior to recordation of the resolution, the petitioner shall, excuse me, that prior to recordation of the resolution, owner shall ensure that all cost recovery expenses have been covered. And then, three, I'm going out of order here. Prior to recordation, petitioner shall record a shared roadway easement agreement, which, as I indicated, has already been reviewed, and we already are in possession of an executed copy of that. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Jeff, for the submission of the report. Appletons Council's presence, Mr. Kleiman, please state your name, address to the record, and if you've been sworn in.
I have been sworn in, Scott Kleiman, Kailas Kleiman and Wolf, 7320 Griffin Road, Suite 109, Davie 3331, 33314. We concur with staff's report, and just a couple other things that I wanted to provide in terms of information to the council. The signed easement agreement is sitting on my desk, ready for recordation as soon as the town approves our application for waiver of plat. An additional $500 recently to the town for cost recovery, and if there's anything that is a shortfall, Mr. Cadence will let me know, we'll get that funding right over to the town. Lastly, I did have a conversation yesterday with our neighbor on the northern half of the property. We share a west, our east boundary, it's Leslie Castner, spoke with her yesterday about some concerns, not so much on the waiver of plat, but at such a point in time that the property is developed, she was concerned about how we clear it, and whether there would be critters running under it, as well as drainage, which I assured her we have to meet with the town's requirements, as well as those of South Broward Drainage District that have drummed into us very clearly that drainage must flow east. Ms. Castner was very satisfied with the conversation, and we look to be forward to being a good neighbor with her. And if the mayor of the town, any questions, I'm available to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Kleiman, does any member of the town council have any questions of either Mr. Cadence or Mr. Kleiman at this time?
The only one I had was at the time of clearing, when they get ready to do that. It was asked, and I did speak to Leslie Castner about it, and a couple other neighbors, was the clearing of the property scatters the animals, the rats, the mice, the opossums, and etc. And they were wondering, and I don't know if Mr. Kleiman had a chance to talk to Ms. Castner about it, you know, could they put up some kind of barrier, silk barrier or something?
I did speak with Ms. Castner yesterday, we had a very long and very cordial, positive conversation. We not only told her we would clear the property west to east, to not drive any of the animals that might be residing on this property toward her property, but we also discussed how we can screen, and the efforts that my client will take to put some screening at the lower portion of her fence, so those animals don't go onto her property. And she was very receptive and satisfied with our discussion.
Mr. Kleiman, are you willing to add that as a stipulation to the approval tonight?
If the town council so wishes, yes.
Okay. At this point in time, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for calling, or Russell, but I'm calling the public, but before doing so, in accordance with the Florida case law, and I know Councilmember Schroeder stated it, but has anyone else had any ex parte communications concerning this item?
I had spoke to some residents that live south of there briefly today.
You remember their names, or what the...
I believe it was Ms. Sullivan.
And can you disclose what the conversation was about?
It was just basically, it was concerned a different lot than this one, and she was mistaken between lots, and we straightened it out.
Anyone else have any ex parte communications? Except Mr. Schroeder, who stated previously. All right, Russell, because of the fact that you have control, I'm gonna turn it over to you. All members of the public who wish to speak on this item still need to be sworn in.
Okay, Keith, we have one member of the public, Richard Saroheya, who's raised his hand. I'm going to go ahead and bring him on board, I'll swear him in, and then we'll allow him to speak. Mr. Saroheya? Okay, have you been sworn?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, if you would raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you may proceed.
Okay, so generally, I think my concerns with the plat really has to do with, and I think it's interesting, if you check out the Southwest Ranches website, you know, preface with preserving a rural lifestyle. I think the concerns are generally that the proposed plat doesn't meet the two acre minimum, right? And kind of how I got to that conclusion was taking a look at sort of the plat planned out, right? There's two potential plats, if you actually take a look at the two potential planned plats, they kind of look like Tetris pieces, they're not exactly what you would kind of expect in two level even plats. Plat one, I think, fails the net two acre test, because I don't think it takes into account a certain easement that's actually mentioned on the map, and that easement is the driveway easement. It does take into account the ingress easement that needs to be built on plat one, but not the driveway one. Similarly, for plat two, I think plat two, although technically on paper, it looks like it meets the two acre test, I actually think it doesn't, because there's currently no ingress easement into plat two. There's also no driveway easement into plat two either. So I don't see how any kind of development on plat two could exist. The reason I think this is important is because I think that, basically, there needs to be enough space coming in that ingress easement, not only for any potential driveways or people coming in and out, but if you think about any construction vehicles, municipal garbage vehicles, obviously, a lot of the land has to be cleared for any potential development that may go on on both plats, there needs to be space for that, and it has to be safe for all the residents. It's only gonna be connected to one small cul-de-sac, which is already pretty crowded at the moment. And finally, I also think that if we think about sort of the way that the land development code also stipulates, is that generally, we basically want, basically, to, a well-planned legal development, a high-density commercial development, basically, doesn't kind of meet that standard. I think the purpose is to protect the high-quality living, the rural or semi-rural character, and I'm very concerned that, basically, this development plan, two lots in the place of one, doesn't satisfy that.
Thank you, Russell, is there any additional public comment?
I don't see anybody else's hands raised, Keith.
All right, at this time, then, in accordance with the town's rules, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff Cadence for final comment, and then Mr. Kleiman for final comment.
Thank you, Keith. Generally, I've heard...
I'm sorry, Keith, I do have, looks like, one other person that's now raised their hand. There's no name attached to the phone number, it's just the phone number that's there. So I'll bring them on board, I presume they want to speak on this issue.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, yes, my name is Andrew Griffith.
Have you been sworn, sir?
No, I have not, sir.
All right, if you would raise your right hand, please.
Okay.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Proceed.
Yes, I live at 17350 Southwest 52nd Court, and I agree with the prior comments, is that we have a very tight, crowded area here. This is a flyback lot, and there's just a limited amount of traffic that you can get back onto this lot. And I share the same concerns as the previous speaker about, you know, increased traffic in the area, and preserving, you know, the peace and rural environment that we're currently enjoying. So the reason for my comment is just to publicly voice my disapproval of separating this lot into two parcels.
Okay, thank you, sir. Keith, we do have one other speaker on the line. It's Mark Modrich. Mr. Modrich, have you been sworn?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay, would you raise your right hand, please?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Please proceed.
Okay, I live adjacent to the property at 17351 Southwest 52nd Court, just to the west. And I had met the previous owners of the property. My understanding was they were gonna build a home there, and I thought that was pretty nice. But now that I see that a developer is buying it and subdividing it, I'm seeing this happen around rolling oaks, and it's not a good indication of what we tried to build rolling oaks as. So we're crowding more smaller lots and lots more houses into smaller areas. And as previous people described, this is a tight cul-de-sac back here, and now we're gonna have two additional houses servicing that same cul-de-sac. And it's gonna result in a lot of extra traffic, and it's gonna be very busy. I just don't think, in general, that rolling oaks should be subdividing properties like this into two acre lots. And I think it also invalidates the code on properties in rolling oaks. I think they're supposed to be two and a half acres unless they get a variance, and those had to be grandfathered in years ago. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Modrich, thank you very much for your comments. Okay, Mayor, that's it for public speaking.
So at this point, Russell, before we turn it over to the mayor, we have to find out if Jeff Cadence or have any concluding comments, may want to answer any of the president's questions, and then Mr. Kleiman, back to the mayor for deliberation.
Yeah, if he could address those comments, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The town has had, these are called shared driveways. More urban areas and suburban areas require that every lot has frontage on a street, public or private. Almost since the town's incorporation, the town has allowed these a combination of things that are found in rural areas that are not found in suburban areas. One of them are called flag lots, where a lot has a pole-like extension with a driveway connecting to a public street, whereby that lot is behind another lot, except for that extension, that stick-like extension going down the street. The town even went further and allowed up to four homes to have access to a shared driveway. These are very common in the ranches. In this case, you're talking about three homes gaining access from it. Only the two that are under discussion today require access to the easement, whereas the other property has, to the south, has frontage on the cul-de-sac itself of 52nd Court. So this is something that's been in the town's code for a long time. This is a fairly common arrangement. This 25-foot ingress egress easement pre-existed this application. I want to say it was in the 80s, but I'm not sure exactly when it was established. Maybe the petitioner can add to that. So it meets the town's requirements. It's an arrangement that we do see, and the proposed driveway easement that was discussed, it's really... They don't need an easement for a driveway, per se, because this is on somebody's property, and nobody else is using that driveway to get access through another property. It's merely an area for a turnaround. And these informal turnarounds are not subject to the same requirements that an ingress egress easement or shared driveway are subject to, meaning that they don't count against lot area. They tend to be stabilized areas that are just cleared of obstructions for a fire truck, or, you know, garbage truck, or just anybody who wandered down to turn around, and are not paved the way that the actual shared driveway is. So those were the two comments that I heard. We were talking about rural character. This was established because it's consistent with the town's rural character. And the requirement is not for two and a half acres, you need two net acres or two and a half gross acres. So that concludes my comments.
Okay, so there's nothing that, I got a question here. There's nothing additional that we need, or any dedication, a road right of way, or anything like that, that the town needs from them?
That's correct.
Mayor, can I jump in here for a second?
Right ahead, Gary.
I think we have some residents that are trying to get in, and I'm trying to coordinate with Russell. We're trying to get in during the public speaking part, and have been unable to do that. And I wanted to send Russell some information, if I can.
Right ahead.
Councilmember Jablonski, you mean that there are members of the public who wish to speak on this item, but have been unable to do so?
That is correct.
Is there a number that we can give, Russell, is there a phone number we can give, so they can call in directly?
Sure, it's on the waiting list, I'll be glad to give it out over the call right now. If people somehow, well, if they can't call in, and they can't hear it, they're not gonna hear the number. But I just sent it to Councilmember Jablonski, but the phone number for them to call in is 312-626-6799. Again, that number is 312-626-6799. And then there's a meeting ID that they have to plug in. The meeting ID is 890-8365-2179. Again, 890-8365-2179. And once they get into the call, what they need to do is, if they'd like to speak, is they press star and nine. That raises their hand on the call, and lets us know that they wish to speak. Okay, now with those instructions, that has figured out how to raise their hand, if you'd like me to call on them, I'd be happy to do so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Somebody's got their hand up.
Yeah, I got them, okay. Let's see, if you would, 305-431-3394, if you would state your name for the record, please.
Miranda Soroya.
Okay, and have you been sworn, ma'am?
Uh, no.
Okay, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you have two minutes, you may proceed.
Okay, respected mayor, councilman, and woman, and staff, my name is Miranda Soroya, and I live, eat, breathe at Southwest Ranches. I love our town, and the wellness, and the prosperity, as well as the safety of all the citizens of Southwest Ranches. We are completely opposed to massive development of 17301 Southwest 52nd Court. We do not want to divide this parcel. It is a massive project, and it will take years to develop due to the two-lot situation. It will affect our life. I am talking about the safety, safety issue here. Two lot equal more years to dwell. More traffic and more danger to us due to the location of this lot. Please imagine, small tiny road, only one-way street, three household will share this driveway. Poor or very little visibility, perfect recipe for accident, or even death, due to the, to human, and to the kids, and to the animals. It will ruin our life, and our property, and our, all around the gates, all around our neighborhood. Due to the big truck will have difficulty to turn around 90-degree angle because of the location of this road. Imagine how the garbage truck, mailman, and bulk bill have an issue, how it will be picked up. It's gonna have a huge safety issue. We live here, salad don't, and we care our safety. We will be unable to enjoy our property due to the safety issue. Please stop dividing this lot, thank you for your time, God bless you, and bless our town, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soroya, okay. Mayor, I don't see anybody else on the... On the list of people requesting, oh, there's, yeah, I don't see anybody else.
Gary, anybody else that you know of?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
At this time, Mayor, before I turn it over to the council for final questions, deliberation, Mr. Kleiman, do you have any final things to add to the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Polikoff. Just... Both of these lots meet the requirements of the town's code, they're both in excess of two acres. We have a certified land surveyor, John Police of Police Land Surveying, who has not only surveyed it, but he has done the calculations. He's a professional certified land surveyor in the state of Florida. We all rely on the accuracy of what he does, I have, the town has, through Mr. Cadence, so we meet that requirement. The, I believe it was the first speaker did try to raise the issue of parcel two needing an easement driveway on its property. It actually doesn't, because it connects to the easement that's gonna run through lot one, which is the south parcel. So there's not any easement required there. The easement that does exist, and it is in place, the 25-foot easement that's there now, was created as a matter of deed in 1994, which was a deed to my clients. My clients have owned the property. Mrs. Garmiso, before she got married, owned the property in 94, and they took joint title in 1996. So we've owned the property for a number of years. As to the last, we're talking about creating, from instead of one lot, two lots. Two lots is not massive in terms of development. One of the other speakers actually referenced commercial development. This clearly is not commercial, it's strictly residential. And if there are issues concerning vehicular traffic, whether a fire truck or garbage truck can get in there, those are site plan issues, which we will deal with in the future, at the point in time that these parcels are developed. But for tonight's purpose of plat, my proposal and our application have met all elements of the town, and we would ask that the town council approve this waiver of plat tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kleiman, at this point, Mayor, it's over to the town council for deliberation. If the town council finds that by competent substantial evidence that the waiver of plat that's before you tonight meets the requirements of the code, it's required to approve the item, five votes are required for such approval. Mayor, it's over to you.
Okay, any of my colleagues have additional comments they'd like to say on this matter?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Gary.
Okay, I'm looking at the property appraiser copy, and this is really a question for Jeff, I think. Is the property to the north and to the south, are they the same size? You may or may not know this.
I can tell you in just one second, I believe they are, and I can confirm that in a second.
I'm looking at Google Maps right now, and they are. If you go out to Google Maps or Google Earth, you can see the whole area. Most of the lots to the north of it are all the same size as that, the subdivided lot.
So it would be...
Yes, they're the same size.
Okay.
Keith, excuse me, not Keith. Jeff, I had a question for you in the beginning, but there wasn't enough time. Why are we having both lots? First off, the comment was made, I think, that the driveway, or whatever you want to call it, was going north, but I think by the plan, it looks like it's going south. Why not split the difference on the traffic? And have one lot feed north and one lot feed south? I'm assuming that on the houses to the north of it, there's an easement, or similar easement there, is that true or not true?
The, this property has its only access via the existing easement coming off of fifty-second court. They would need to obtain access through the property to the north, which doesn't exist right now.
Okay. I don't like the idea of subdividing properties over here. And going against the residents' wishes. I mean, it does. Right now, there's probably no traffic coming out of that lot. We're about to add a bunch more. When this is developed and I feel for the people. But you, the, the lot sizes, once they're split, are net two acres. It conforms to the law, I think is what you said earlier in your report says.
Correct.
So basically, if I could jump in here for a second.
Go ahead, Gary.
You're looking at one property now doubling to two properties. So if the one property developed without splitting, you would have that same use from that driveway and now you're just adding, you're adding one more. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, and, and the driveway, the easement was sized for two lots. Whether or not that was communicated or articulated when the easement was granted. Only fifteen feet of easement width is required for one lot to have access to another. You need twenty-five feet of width to have more than one lot access a street through another lot. So this was sized for two homes.
So Jeff, on the plat, I see that the proposed easement is twenty-five by one oh five. And there's an existing easement there that is twenty-five also. Are they going to widen that to, to provide traffic, you know, enough for two cars to pass each other? Because from the picture, it looks like half a country road.
Councilmember, to answer your question, what I was just referring to before was what we consider adequate width to accommodate traffic for more than one home. So if it was just one home, it would be a fifteen-foot driveway width requirement. And for two homes or more, it's twenty-five feet. So, you know, clearly, clearly, if you do have two cars coming, one has to pull to the side a little bit. As you would on a country road. But that's the way these are designed and it does meet the requirements.
But the easement is twenty-five feet. Does that require them to put a road in at twenty-five feet?
No, it requires that a portion of it be paved, but the rest of it is to provide for drainage.
Got it.
Okay, so when engineering reviews this, when they come in for a permit, they will ensure that the pavement surface is sufficient for one car to travel and one car to pull off on a, on a stabilized shoulder. And they'll ensure that the drainage for the paved surface is adequate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else here to speak?
I'll jump back in for a second. I just to summarize this, where you're looking at a, we're, we're looking at a, a property that could be developed right now on the four acres. And have a home built on it. And basically, they want to add one more home. So that's, and it's in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood and it's all meets all our codes. I feel for the people that are north and south of it because they've had the luxury of having an empty lot next to them for many years, decades probably. And it's quite peaceful and serene. And now they're about to have neighbors, you know, the potential of having neighbors depending on what happens tonight.
Had a year or two of construction.
Yeah. Yeah, all that, all that's going to take place. If that's goes any further.
Anyone else want to have any input here?
Mayor, we have one other, we have another person. I think it's someone we've called on before. It looks, the number looks familiar. I don't know if you want to hear from them again or?
Under the circumstances, I'll let them go. Go ahead.
Unless it's a repeat conversation, Russell, if it's a repeat, it can't continue.
Oh yeah, I'm not certain of that. I'd have to call on them to make sure it's the same person.
All right, well, if it's a repeat, we'll, we'll shut them down. But, but
Three three nine four, phone number ending in three three nine four?
Yes.
Is this Ms.?
Yes, I have a comment. I have a, yes, sir. Thank you. I heard somebody just said, oh, we will deal with the safety or a fire, a fire truck or mailman or like a garbage truck later on. No, 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 no. We have to deal it now. This, this road is not designed for three household. We are talking far about the safety, the attorney, the seller do not live here. We would love to have a one development here. We would love to. We do not want this empty lot sitting there. We knew that when we bought our property, we knew that one day somebody will develop a beautiful house there. And now and they, we, we keep it updated that they never clean it. They never done anything. The, the, the original seller, sorry, the, the owner died. Now suddenly his family will try to make a money on the expense of us or our safety. No, we are not going to let this happen. This is my promise. We are not going to let to build this two houses here. This is not acceptable. This is our safety. This is our safety. If it wasn't our safety, I don't mind. We would love to have one house, big house built there. Okay, so please, please consider all that. There's a no need to be making a decision at this time. We would want to be, we have to all sit down. We all have
Russell, that's enough.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Can we chime in on this?
Go ahead, Pete.
Hello?
Yes.
First of all, the original owners of this property, I believe, were from Sunshine Ranches. It was Peter Belaski and his wife. And that was many, many moons ago. So you know, the owners actually, the original owners actually live in this town. Just FYI for everybody. What I needed to say.
It seems to me it's going to be two houses. It's not a development. You know, with multiple houses and sixty-five cars each. So I don't know.
Need all the requirements.
Yeah, I mean, it's legal. It'd be crazy if we turned them down to build a, a property because then we're also saying that only one house can be built on on four plus acres. That's sort of silly, I think. As long as it meets the legal requirements of the town, I don't see how we turn them down.
Did I get a motion?
Let me just get one more question. And Jeff, in light of the residents' comments, is there anything we can do to help out? I mean, I realize we have to follow the law and if they comply with the law, we, we have to approve, but you're hearing about traffic, you're hearing about safety concerns, things like that. Is there anything we can do to accommodate?
I have a question to ask. Sorry, I just want to say, nothing has happened yet.
Can, can Jeff answer my question first?
No.
No?
Yes.
Oops.
You just pulled your leg, Bob.
I know. I started smiling.
There are a couple of considerations. One of them is once it's developed and you have two homes there. Yes, you're going to have a certain, you got a certain number of cars coming and going each day. Whether or not you have two homes or one home, you're still going to have a garbage truck that's going to have to go up there and pick up the trash. Whether it's one or, okay. So that's, that's once it's developed. Now, when the town created the standards for these shared driveways, we did so fully understanding, you know, that, that all sorts of vehicles had to be able to use these, turn around and come back out. So they were developing coordination with the fire department, fire marshal at the time, and engineering. And they were all engineering-based standards. Now, in terms of the, the impact of construction, I don't know if this is something that Mr. Kleiman would agree to because I don't know what the plans are for the property. But if both properties were to be developed at one time, at least the, the period of construction would be lessened. And that might alleviate, you know, the temporary inconvenience to the neighbor to the south. But I'd have to leave that to Mr. Kleiman to address.
Mr. Cadums and members of the council, Mayor. My clients are not professionals. So I can't assure the council that two homes are going to be built at the same time or not. So I can't, I can't agree to that only because I can't impose that on my clients who may build one house, they may build tomorrow and another one in a decade. So, and I don't know what the plans are in the corner of my mind, we either do that. So that's just a term I can't agree to on their behalf. Obviously, when we do come in for site plan and permit, we will do meet the requirements. And we will willingly work on all of these different concerns and we will be happy to sit with the neighbors and discuss them. Just as I spoke with Ms. Castner yesterday. We want to be good neighbors. We want to lessen any impacts, but again, we're talking about two homes as opposed to one. And there's no guarantee that if it was just one home built on four, that it would not have been a large enough home, that you would have had perhaps the same amount of traffic and same number of vehicles you'd have on two. But again, we, we meet with the considerations and requirements of code. And, and just to, for, for councilmembers' edification, before my clients acquired the property in the nineties, it was owned by some folks by the name of Wright, who appeared to own it going back to and then I think there were, the Kronks were in there as well. I don't see the, see the Belaskis in there. Dr. Belaski is actually a client of our office. I'd be happy to talk to him tomorrow and find out.
I, I correct myself. It is. It is, it was Kronk.
Hundred, yeah, okay, not a problem. I just wanted to be accurate here.
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion in a second?
Well, wait a minute, before you go, go into there, do, what if, what if they build one house? And then they want to turn around and sell that piece of property and let somebody else come in there? Do we go through this process again?
No, it's a lot that they can build on. It's already split.
They can turn around and after we approve this, they can turn around and sell both lots. They're not bound to develop it.
Okay, but no more than two homes can go on there, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, one more than, one more that can go on it right now.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any additional questions or comments?
Yeah, for purpose of the record, is that motion subject to the staff conditions and the stipulation made by Mr. Kleiman earlier?
Yes.
And the second agrees to that, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, call the question, please.
Mayor, there's, I don't know if you want to entertain any more public comment on this issue. Okay.
No.
Just wanted to let you know.
I appreciate it.
Not a problem. Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Unfortunately, yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Same as Gary, unfortunately, yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmembers?
Yep, you're welcome.
Have a nice evening and be pleased. Thank you.
Okay, we don't have anything else in that. We go into our regular meeting?
You gotta do the pledge of allegiance again?
No, no, we don't have to restart the whole thing this time.
Oh, okay.
All right, so any public comments? You want to do that part first? You want to read the rules, Keith?
You muted, Keith.
Keith, you're muted.
I saw that. Public comment is limited to non-agenda items only and non-quasi judicial items. A public comment is three minutes per speaker about any non-agenda item and the time clock is ripe and fine. Russell, I'll turn over to Russell since he can mute and unmute anyone.
Okay, Keith, thank you. The first speaker that I have is John Eastman. Mr. Eastman, you there?
You're muted, John.
John, can you unmute?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, just a couple items. I guess the contractor's starting work again on one eighty-eighth Avenue to complete the swales. And I had talked to Andy about maybe revising the swell design. I'd like the council members to come out and have a look at what they've done. If you can just take a drive down the street and just ask yourself if you'd like this in front of your home. Now, one eighty-eighth Avenue, as it was laid out, Country Estates back in the day in the seventies, had a drainage plan and it's worked all these years. It's just we've had a little buildup on the edge of the road, which really needs to just be cleared back with a blade and allow the water to get off the road into the yard so it can dissipate. The swell design hasn't worked. It's created a huge mess. The contractor's in over his head with it and I think it's time that we have some adult supervision on this job and maybe make some changes to it. That's that. The second item is the, the access gate for three, four, five has had additional upgrades done on the software and the, the visitors are now able to actually use the touchpad and get in. Where before they were not. The, the gate was operated about six weeks without visitors being able to access it. There's a couple glaring problems still there as we've got three active construction sites. And none of those workers or delivery people have anybody to call to get the gate open. So they're using one eighty-eighth Avenue for all the heavy trucks and employee traffic, which goes down and, you know, goes around in the back entrance. Also, the gate, as people leave, even if they gain access through the front with the keypad, there's no keypad to get out. And there's no way to, for the, somebody who's come in to visit to leave. So they have to leave the back way, which ultimately puts them back again on one eighty-eighth Avenue. So I, I would hope that the council would come up with some sort of a solution to this so that the three, four, five neighborhood can use that three hundred thousand dollar entrance that we paid for and overcome the issues with the gate. That's it. Thanks very much, council. I appreciate it.
No problem. Anyone else?
Okay, Mayor, we have, yeah, we have a couple of other speakers. Just give me one second. Okay, the next speaker is Steve Bright Cruz. Mr. Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Bright Cruz, are you there?
Yeah. Good to see you. Just a couple of things. One, I wanted to kind of, we spoke last time about the call in and I appreciate, Russell, you've done a great job in trying to kind of smooth this out. But I still think that this whole process is less than optimal and people that would like to attend are having difficulty. So I'm looking forward to getting back into that council chambers and be able to do this the way it should be done. But, you know, kudos to the town for doing all they can do to get it done. The other thing that I wanted to, to discuss was that the with all the rains that we've had recently, it's re, really brought back the fact that we have work to do in Frontier Trails. And we've done an incredible amount of work from the Drainage Committee and from the council, getting grants and, and the funding required to do about eighty percent of the job to get the water to be able to be moved from Frontier Trails over to the canal that is just west of one ninety-sixth. However, we have that one final connection that still has not been done. And frankly, it's overdue. It's just getting worse. It's not getting better. All the neighbors here are, have been totally flooded out and as more and more homes bring in more and more fill, frankly, it just gets worse. I looked at the, the master plan of the projects that were in the works and I don't see it on there. So it doesn't look like as far as council priorities, it's even close to being picked up and finished off. It's, it's, it's a little disheartening to spend as much money as we spent over the last ten years, ten, fifteen years and not see the final piece, which is actually going to deliver the relief, not see that final piece in the immediate future. So I would strongly recommend that the council So I would strongly recommend that the council take a look at that again. But it has a top priority to obtain funding. For it's going to benefit a wide number of homes on 195th as well as those on 193rd and and that whole section in there. And so it's it's a multi-home benefit. It's something that the neighborhood has been waiting for for many years. For as long as I've been out here, 25 years, and we're so close and yet that final piece seems like it's out of reach at the moment. So I think that should be a priority. I think it needs to get on the list. As soon as the Drainage Committee gets back together, I will be bringing it up with them. But frankly, this is this is a decision the council needs to take action on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bright Cruz. We have one other speaker. It's Mrs. I'm sorry, we have two other speakers. We have Mrs. Sarah Hi- Sarah Hia again. She's, um, let me see if it's on the same issue or a different issue. Is that you? Are you there? Miss Sarah Hia? Okay, must be gone.
Somebody's on, I don't know.
Yeah, Miss Sarah Hia? Last four numbers, 3394.
Hello?
Okay, well, we'll move them off. And then the last speaker is David Kazinsky. David, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Administration. David Kazinsky, 6411 Hollaty Trail. Couple of issues I'd like to bring up for this public comment opportunity. We saw a tremendous amount of rain over the weekend. However, prior to that, there has been some lesser rain. And there has been some, I guess, a wall constructed on Luray, Luray Road just east of Hollaty. And it has somehow resulted in tremendous amount of flooding. And our great resident Vince Valetta did a great job in making sure that we had great drainage for this area, but since this construction has taken place, this this whole area has been a lot of flooding. And I pointed it out to George Morris. He came by and he took some videos of it. And I'm pretty confident, or actually, I'm very confident Mr. Morris will take take this, take control of this and help resolve this, but I just wanted to point this out to the council. Second of all, it has to do with permitting. I recently had a permit approved for a new roof on my house. And on Friday, I made a phone call and I was told verbally that the permit was approved. And I notified my contractor that it had been approved and he went online or on app and he said it still shows that it's being reviewed. And this went all the way through until Wednesday, when I had to make a phone call following up to the town. And it was explained to me that they had to go through, I think it's two different servers or two different connections that they had to somehow merge so that they could show that the permit was approved online. Even though I was told that it was approved verbally on Friday, and I don't know if there's something we could do to resolve this, but the delay obviously didn't affect it that much because we had tremendous amount of rain. But it is something that should be looked into. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kazinsky. Mayor, that's it. Those are all the public speakers that we have for this evening.
Okay, I'm guessing we don't have any board reports, but I'm going to inquire. Any board reports? Anyone raising their hands?
No.
Okay. We're on to council member comments. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go.
All right.
Yeah, it's just going to be really, really short and brief. Just want to mention that the Education Advisory Board met last Tuesday, I believe, and they've extended the scholarship application process. So if you're if you're working on the scholarship, you have till the end of this month you submit it. So they've extended it to month end, and I just want to make make sure anybody.
The end of June or was it May?
End of May.
End of May, okay.
Deborah, do I have that correct?
Yes, sir, council. Yes, sir, council member, it's May 31st.
Thank you.
Okay. Who'd like to go next? Anything else, Gary? You're good?
No, that's it. I just wanted to mention that I'm fine.
All right. Like you go next.
I'll jump in. Just a couple of really questions based on some of the resident feedback. You don't necessarily have to have a keypad to exit behind a gate. Generally, they put in loops in the road, so when it senses a car coming up, it'll automatically open. So I'm not sure what's going on there, but it bears looking into. John's right. I mean, if everybody's got to leave out through 188 through, what is that, 63rd in the back there, that that doesn't make a lot of sense at all. They need to be resolved.
They don't have a loop.
I have another question about that gate in general, though, because I've been riding my bike around town for approximately 10 weeks now. And, you know, I I noticed that when we, when Landmark Ranches came to us and asked to put up a gate, we made sure that there was access for horses and bicycles. So they have a special entrance there that allows people to to enter. Over on 190th, it's all chain link. Did we just miss that or, you know, I I thought we wanted to be inclusive. I didn't think we we really wanted it anywhere to have a gate that people on horses, for example, couldn't get in. So Andy, if you wouldn't mind addressing that, I wasn't involved at all in any of the approvals on the gate, obviously. I'm just not sure how that came to fruition without some sort of pedestrian or or horse access. Concerning Frontier Trails and the drainage project out there, I thought we did have something on the books for that. And I thought Kevin was going to take care of it. Andy, I'm not sure if that's something you or Rod could respond to. But I know as well, you've had some conversations with a third party that's interested in developing that for a land bank usage. I would imagine that that would take care of the problem.
Yeah, we'll let Andy address that when it's he goes.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And then after 10 years on the Drainage Committee, I was pretty proud day before yesterday, when I drove around town after the deluge and saw we didn't have a lot of significant, I mean, we had flooding. We're going to have flooding. Everybody had flooding. Weston, who's got a canal on every corner, had flooding. So but when I drove around today, most of the water's gone down. I know that that South Florida has had the three pumps running over at the end of Griffin Road Canal since, I think Kevin said since Saturday. I know the pumps around town are all the gates are open, so my yard went from a foot of water and my pond almost up to the road down to my pond is still high, but it's within its banks and my my north field is 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 much less flooded. So it it seems to be working now. I'd love to hear if there, other than over there on Frontier Trails, I'd love to hear if there's any other areas that are still flooded because in driving around the town, it it seemed to me that in 20 years, we've made incredible progress. We don't have the big main roads flooded anymore. There was no, now Gary, of course, Rolling Oaks is different.
I have a pond now. I didn't have one. And a lake. Yeah.
You need to talk to somebody on the Drainage Committee.
Yeah, but it's draining. It's draining really well.
Yo, when I was over your way, I mean, most of Rolling Oaks was flooded, but I don't think the rain even stopped yet. So that's all I had, Doug.
Okay.
Thank you.
D or Delso?
No.
No, I'm good.
We we have Lake Amundson, but we've always had Lake Amundson and it goes down. We're good.
Okay, all right. My front yard goes underwater and then day or two it's down. So I'm good. It's status quo for me as far as that goes. I guess a lot of people need to realize that unless South Florida Drainage turns the pumps on, which starts at Pine Island to pump out towards the Everglades, takes a little while for the gravity feed to down for Central Broward. So hit for tat, if that's not working, then and with as much rain as we had, it takes a little while to get caught up with.
It all works.
Yeah, it's working.
Yeah.
It's working.
The plan is working.
So aside from that, I would like to say legal comments. Keith, you're up.
Sure, Mayor. Just real briefly.
By the way, how's your pond level?
It's starting to go down as well. Thank you. Some of you may know I built a retaining wall around a pond because the street kept getting flooded and I'm pleased to say for the first time that it actually worked. The street was not flooded and the retaining wall actually kept the pond in check. So it was good news. Mayor, at the last meeting on May 14th, you all passed a resolution 2020-36. That was a budget appropriation, a resolution. And in that resolution, there was the wrong fund balance number of where the funds were being assigned to and then later caught it. So with the council's consent, we're just going to change the number as a Scrivener's error unless you all want it back before you. So the purpose purpose I'm bringing this up is just to make sure that no one objects to Russell just fixing the the number. It was supposed to go from the transfer of the general fund to the Landscape Maintenance Service and the way it showed was an unassigned unassigned fund balance to the transportation funds. It was just the wrong numbers.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
So Russell, just let the record reflect that and then just make the change in the actual resolution itself. Other than that, Mayor, I've been using the the time for the pandemic. At Town Hall, I have my secretary there and Andy knows we're using the council chambers to bring in 100 boxes of town materials since the year 2000. And she has been going through every, Russell's showing it now, every single box of town record to make sure that the town's records are complete. So we're utilizing this time to to her dismay, I guess, to go through the town's records and to scan in anything that was not previously done during the days of Jim Ward so a long time ago. So she's probably 50% done. We've requested another 40 boxes from my office. So if anyone sees her by the dumpster next week, that's what she is doing. But everything is being logged in and making sure the town has the records. Other than that, Mayor, I hope everyone had a nice Memorial Day. Thanks again to all of our service personnel who serve, and I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Andy, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things very briefly. And and Louise has been working very hard. She's earning whatever Keith is paying her. She's earning. So she's doing a great job going through the town files. There was a comment before in Frontier Trails.
Let me interject one quick second. She also had to learn a whole new platform. Keith has converted it over to an Apple computer. And I think that's been a little bit of an education also.
Yes, the town, the town is on, the town is on IBM base and Keith likes to work with Apple. So Louise just had to readjust to that, but she seems to be handling.
Thank you.
There was some comments before about Frontier Trails and and Councilmember Hartman alluded to it. We are currently trying to work with FDOT who has a need for off-site mitigation for other projects elsewhere that has nothing to do with our town. And and so that Frontier Trails Park Development, we feel pretty good. We've got a good opportunity to get that done and that drainage aspect is part of that as well. So we're currently trying to work with them to bring that that something forward to the council for your consideration. But we're, I'll say cautiously optimistic that we're going to be able to make something work on that front. The other thing was, I think there was a question about horse access into Griffin 345. And and if I remember correctly, in other areas where we've done that, there are public roads, public right of ways, easements, those kinds of things that that we're able to do that. When you go into Griffin 345, every single thing is private property.
You can't need all of it.
So the minute you get to the other side of the gate, it's private property. So we couldn't require access onto private.
You need to mute your phone. Hold on. D, you need to mute your phone. Just hit mute on your phone. You'll be good, dear.
I think she did.
Andy, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so that's that's the we we could not force them to provide access onto private property. So that's why there's not equestrian access in that in that location. And the only other thing I'll share with you is is the COVID-19 response and recovery seems to be going well. Staff is in the process of being tested and we've got some good results back so far. I'll I'll leave it vague like that. And the good news is we are going to return staff to the office effective next Monday, June 1st. We're not quite ready to open up to the public yet. We think we've done a pretty good job of providing service in in the interim. But I'm looking forward to having the staff back in one place and under one roof and working all together. So I wanted to share that with you as well. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, can I jump in for a second?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, on a comment that Andy made. I just wanted to point out that this two side streets down, further down 188 going into Griffin 345 and the, I think it's 60, 62nd or 63rd at the at the base of 345 have equestrian bike pedestrian access. It's just the front gate. I think it doesn't have it.
Yeah, it's correct. 54, 57, 63.
Yeah, I couldn't remember the street number, but I remember seeing it the other day, you know, that they still had that.
So let me interject and ask you a question because Bob mentioned it kind of a half hazard way, but the park, we do have the park that serves for sports and riding and whatnot. But would anybody be interested in placing a gate or a horse access in the back of that chain link fence to get into that neighborhood? Just a comment, so.
Mayor, if you do that, you're you're providing access onto private property. You wind up in that same situation again.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't know if you did it closer to the gate, that it wouldn't be private property, but okay. All their streets are private, is your point.
Correct, correct. They all went to the middle of the road.
Okay.
You mean to the back of Country Estates Park?
Yes.
Got it.
But doesn't sound like we're able to do it, but I just thought I'd throw it out there.
And that's that's all I had for my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Approval of minutes. We've got the corrected minutes from last time?
That's correct, Mayor, and this also includes the exhibit that was requested to be included into the record by Mr. Kazinsky.
Could you read it? I'm I'm sure he'd want us to read it. Just so you get it right this time, Russell, you know.
It's there for the record. I'm sure you looked at it. It's there.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, call the question, please.
I'm sorry, who made the second? I didn't catch that.
Give it a D.
Me.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Amundson?
You're muted.
I know, I know. Yes. I know. I can see the red line through the Darren thing.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, guys.
Well, take it. I want to say, go ahead. Yeah, I was going to say I can't wait till we can all get back together and meet in person again. I look forward to it.
Yeah, big time, you know.
If you're on mute rather than fumble like I do all the time with the mouse, if you press the space bar on your computer.
Space bar, I know. I heard that today from a very wise woman.
That's great. Greatly appreciated, Bob. Thank you.
It wasn't me.
No, it wasn't. Not that you're not wise. It just wasn't you.
No, I'm I'm going to sign up for education lessons on the computer from Bob. He's going to have to start giving lessons.
All right, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night. Stay safe.
Good night, all.
Stay safe.
Good night.
Bye.